My Pollak and myself.
So I can I check out for a second? I had technical difficulties. I'm on a laptop. It's my wife's. My name is Patricia, not Patricia Pollak. If it's going to be recorded, it's kind of a, what do you think? Should I go to my other system, which I understand is up and running now?
You look like Mike.
I know. And 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 excuse the background, which is Florida, but I'm sitting here in Homer.
I honestly, Mike, I don't know if it makes any difference.
Okay, let's go for it.
I mean, you're you're going to be recorded in the minutes and everything else as as Mike and you are on the.
Okay.
I'm I'm okay with that. We obviously know who you are and and the actual minutes of the meeting will record. Such that you're here. So this is the only item on the agenda today is the final site plan approval for. Burn dairy at what I would call two eighty-one and. Keuga Street. So Christians, there anything that you guys need to? Put forth here? I've we have seen the site plan before. This is the final. Version for it. I think everybody's been given either by email or. Dan has had the option to print it out for everybody, the. Information that you asked for, and then there were you provided, and then there were some additional questions that. Don may have had. So Chris, I'd like to give you the opportunity to make any statements that. You've got at this point, and then we'll open for questions. From the board. And I guess if you could Christian introduce the people that you have.
Yes, hello.
Here.
Okay, everyone, Christian, you know, anyway, now, uh, I sent the plans over earlier. There's been some revisions. Julian Clark is on. You'll see Julian on here. I see he's on the video. Julian Clark is with Plumlee Engineering. He is my engineer, the civil engineer designed this. He's worked repeatedly, constantly with, I think, Ken in the last probably. Five or six days. Wrapping this up, tightening up the SWIP and whatnot. Julian has designed probably over thirty, I'd say thirty to forty burn dairy sites right now. So he's very, very familiar with the process of a burn dairy site, the site plan. He does SWIP every day of his life. So he knows what to expect and what to do. Some changes since the last time was preliminary. This is final. The main change is Julian tightened up the SWIP. Which is one of the recommendations for the Cortland County was that the Village of Homer. Hire an engineer to review the SWIP. That has been done. I believe Ken sent his comments, and the number one in the comments was that he's accepted the plan and the SWIP. Ken had some comments as of a few hours ago, which I consider minor kind of landscaping. You can see Julian work extremely quickly, got those changes back so everyone could see them today. Basically, what they were was changing some scarlet oaks out on Route two eighty-one from some maples. We added a tree. He added some trees out back for the neighbors next to the light poles to soften the lighting a little. Some more clusters back there. Just let everyone know here too on the board that I had met with the neighbors several times. They were fine with what was there before, which was. Fewer trees. So I'm sure there's no issues now. This is, you know, there's a lot more trees now. They actually picked the parrot trees out and the maple trees. That's what they wanted. But this is again, this is only adding them. To beef it up. We changed the fence on top of the retaining wall. We've talked about the retaining wall since day one, just because of topography of the site. It's gonna requires a retaining wall. We switched the arborvitae's and the fence on top of that wall. Basically, the fence now is on top of the retaining wall. And the arborvitae's would be on the interior side of the of the retaining wall now. So that kind of flopped. When discussing with the neighbors in the past, they basically said, you know, fence was fine. I said, well, how about I give you a fence and trees? They thought that was wonderful. So we're still keeping the fence and trees above and beyond. We're just from an engineering standpoint and practical standpoint. Ken thought it would be a good idea, as well as my site contractor, that we reversed the arborvitae's and the and the fence. Trying to think what else. Since the last time, you know, I had a lighted detail lighting plan done. They actually moved. We had twelve yard lights on the plan before. Now we're down to ten. The reason we did that is spill onto any state highway is not allowed. So therefore, that was reduced from twelve to ten. Lighting plan has no spill outside the property lines whatsoever. So I think we've addressed that. We have used. You know, our lighting package, a hundred percent LED. These lights are not standard lights. These are a hundred percent dark sky friendly compliance. Okay, which most I can tell you, most people do not use those. I use them in all projects regardless. They're much different than a normal lighting package. They have to, Ken knows, they have to meet all these lighting standards. I just, that is my standard package, which is 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 up here compared to what a normal package is. But they're all dark sky friendly compliant. You'll see the lighting plan foot candles is 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 great, I believe. I'm trying to think of some other things. That's it. We basically just tighten it up with a SWIP. So any questions I would take from here? We added some plan notes to address all the county comments, which I have addressed. I've been in correspondence with Dan, New York State DOT has a conceptual approved all driveways. Looked at it. So that was that was done back a few months, a month and a half ago. So we have that in writing. So we're in really good shape, I think, at this point. So I'll entertain any questions.
Absolutely. I'll open it up, Don, or or Mike. Questions, if you have any. Of either of the two engineers or Christian.
Let me, can I jump in for one second, Malin?
Sure, Ken, you, yes, you certainly may.
Um, the the reason was that when Christian was speaking, he froze. On my screen, and then I came back and he was talking about trees. So I'm assuming perhaps, Christian, then prior to that, you were talking about, again, some of the revisions that you were had made in conjunction with my conversations with Julian?
Yes, he did. Yep, he did.
Yeah, we covered all of them.
Okay, 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 good.
That's.
To wrap. Excuse me?
Yeah, you're.
Excuse me? Are you okay? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, um, I guess then, just as a conclusion for my standpoint, as I had written the memo, which I'm assuming and hoping. The board members did receive. Did you get that as part of your packet? Don and Malin?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, there were the SWIP, Julian and I, you know, figured out, we're good. I'm all set and satisfied with that. On the site plan, as Christian had just, you know, walked through, there were some changes based on some things. I did review the tank. Information. I did review the lighting and some of the concerns that I had there were addressed through the modifications that Julian made. After discussing it with Chris, you know, on providing better protection for those homes, because. There's such a dramatic grade change from the back of the site to those properties. With those lights being seventeen feet up in the air, it wasn't so much a matter of. Light trespass and spilling onto the properties as it was just the direct line of sight to the underside of those lamps. So we're going to move some trees closer. I think that was a satisfactory way to do it, and the change of the trees that you mentioned before. So I'm good in general. On that. And, okay, I just wanted to give you my blurb on that so far.
Okay, Ken, thank you. Don or Mike, either one.
Ken mentioned tank. What were you referring to with about the tank? Right? Ken, did I hear you correctly that you talked about a tank in your comments now? Can't hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, he looks like Ken's frozen.
Looks like Ken froze.
Oh, froze, yeah.
Back out again.
Frozen Ken, yes. Well, anyway, has anybody, can anybody, somebody else fill me in what he was referring to about reviewing tanks?
I sent some information out about in regards to underground petroleum tanks and specifications. When I was talking to the county staff, when I went to the county meeting, which I actually did go to myself, they had requested details about my. Burn dairy fuels. I'm going to hold this up. I know I shouldn't, but burn dairy fuel overview. So I, yeah, I got very detailed in, you know, what we'd be using from the fuel type. From lines and whatnot, and that's that's what he had reviewed. But everything, everything I use is, you know, a hundred percent New York State DEC approved, EPA approved. Again, we've built a lot of these. So but the county had wanted this information, and I had given it to them. So I thought you guys should have that as well.
Thank you.
And Ken is back. That's what you were referring to. I think about the tanks, correct, Ken? The information that he just gave.
You're muted.
Oh, can you go down the corner there, Ken, and unmute yourself?
Yep.
There you go.
Back, I hope.
Yes, you are. Technology doesn't always work as we expect it.
For sure.
I just want to tell everyone that the the tank information is part of the packet that I sent out just a little bit ago in the morning, a few hours ago. So it's there to take a look at.
Okay. Don, anything on on your end?
I asked for, and you sent. A photo of the canopy.
Yes.
I I'm not really sure. We we got kind of hairy about that with Speedway. The design of it. Mike. Provide a lot more input than anybody else. Did you see that picture, Mike?
No.
See, there was nothing in the in the original plans. It was we we saw no elevation or anything of the canopy. You should have gotten one less than a half hour ago.
Right. I was occupied. I just made it to the meeting in time, so I didn't see it.
Let me, let me see if I can bring this up.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I have this. Let me see if this shows up. Supposed to be able to share the screen, and I'm trying to. Look at, I thought I might be able to bring that picture. It's on mic.
Does Dan need to do it because he's their host? I don't know.
Oh, that may be because it's on. I have the picture on my computer, but I guess I right now I can't share it.
Hold on one second, chief. I'll get that for you.
It's the typical, if you've ever seen a burn dairy.
Your co-host, chief, so you could should be able to do it.
Yeah, so so I I see it now on my cellphone here.
Okay.
Wasn't pretty. I think it's a pretty looking thing. I mean, I was basically relying on. Ben Burnderry's. Reputation and other other projects they've done, and I don't see why this would be any less, if not more than others. So. I personally think this is an attractive thing of as if that's something we really can review. If the size and everything else is fits all specifications. I think we have, you should approve it based upon what the picture is.
Okay, I it just that there was nothing in the original packet that showed what it looked like.
Right.
That's why I asked for the photograph.
That's that's a good move.
And.
So he won't be surprised, yeah.
Right. The the freestanding sign that is going to be. Hmm, looks like close to Keuga Street. That's a. Thirty-two square feet. According to the.
Yeah, that was the original package. Yes, that's what. And that incorporates the architectural roof. I mean, I know I'm holding it up, but. There it is, right, right there. That's that was in the package.
Does that need a variance or anything, or is that?
It does not. Nope, it's within.
I was going to say, I I was pretty sure that all that stuff met the requirements, you know, as we went through before.
I I don't know that that it was ever addressed at any of the meetings as to what the specs were, what the, you know, how many square feet we were allowed for. So many square, so many linear feet of building.
Yeah, it's it's on my site.
Didn't, didn't Kevin, as code officer, review this whole submittal?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was, it was, it's, it's, it's definitely unread. We talked about it in the beginning. It complies. I had to break down here, but it definitely complies.
And I, for some reason, I remembered Dante saying that it was okay, but that may be just me. I've been through so many of these meetings, it might have been something else.
I'm looking at the plan right now. Somebody help me find where it's located.
It's on the corner of Akuga and. Two eighty-one. It's got landscape on it.
Right, but that's a whole big landscape green area.
No, there's some of the drawings show it called out.
One, should be sign number one.
This is the one that was sent today.
Yeah, Julian helped me. It's sign number one, correct?
Yeah, I'm looking to make sure.
I'm looking right at it right now, too. It says sign one.
Uh, this might be turned around for me. I wait a second. I'm not working. Yeah. I'm getting there now.
Okay. Yeah, it's got landscaping around it. Unless you want me to, I can take the landscaping off it. But no.
Sign, sign, sign number one. Okay, let me. Throw out one thing that I heard on the street type of thing, actually from one of our, the one of our planning members. Dick, I think. The, somebody runs out of control on Route ninety coming down. Loses their brakes. There's seems to be, you know, you're all your landscaped area there, which is probably what can take the brunt of it, not get into your canopy and all that. Going to go into the storm stormwater management area and may take that sign out. Is there any thinking that should be done about that? I don't know who else is reviewing that, but. That's an accident waiting to happen. And what are the consequences of what we're designing here in relationship to it? Maybe better than it was. I mean, going into this no man's land here, this landscaped area. Take the sign out. I, by the way, had one. By the way, I live here on. On Albany and Maine, and a truck lost its brakes with a trailer up on the top of Albany Street and came down right to the intersection. And into what used to be called the Wickwire Estate across the way. Nobody was injured. It was quite traumatic, though, for the driver and for the homeowners. So the same thing could happen there and has happened many other places. Malin, you're the man. What's what do you think?
Mike, I'm I'm not sure that there's any way that we can. You know, accident proof, any of that stuff. I think you're probably aware that. You know, they just recently had the one there just past this lot. Where the guy rolled the truck over and slammed it up against the tree. And he had turned. He was being chased by the cops because it was a stolen vehicle and several other things. You know, I with the landscape and that, I think that's probably going to be a bit of a buffer. But we've had things, you know, that were in the middle of. Streets in the village where I wouldn't have thought it would have happened. People have rolled their cars over. And and done damage. So I'm not so sure that there's a way that we can, you know, do that. To ban us with the same thing that happened right across the road in the the sign that is currently there. And there's no landscaping or anything around that one. There's been different types of signs and and things on. At least three of the corners there that I know of, when the other gas station used to be where the open lot is. I think they've done a pretty good job. And like you say, they've got an open lot. If somebody's losing their brakes or something, they're definitely going to try to steer, you know, away from that. But I think somebody going even even north or south on two eighty-one, if they screwed up, they could end up, you know. In that thing, hitting it right on, so.
So I I I think that's actually probably good, the the drainage area there. What about the sign itself with the landscaping around it? Is that an increased hazard? I mean, is this, that's, that's not a breakaway sign. That's a big monstrous thing. Chris, how tall is that?
There would be, I believe, the spec on it is twenty, twenty feet.
That's not that twenty feet. That's not that big. How big, how big around is that pole? And that pole is not breakaway, right?
No, that is not. That would be a, that would be a steel pole.
The traffic signal, the traffic signal pole?
All the traffic.
No, your sign pole.
Well, you got, that's right. I didn't even think about that. My traffic signal poles further out, and that was just recently taken out by that guy with that and that other accident.
Are those designed to be breakaway?
Uh, I don't know. No, I don't believe it was. It was bolted right to the ground. I know what you're thinking about the signs and that where you see the signs on some of the highways like eighty-one. I know that those are definitely designed to be breakaway, but I don't think the traffic. Poles have that design.
Possibly the, possibly the bolts are breakaway bolts, Malin.
Yeah, that could be. That could be.
Is it, what's the, what's the landscaping around that? Is that like a retaining wall that holds the dirt, you know, like concrete?
That's mulch, it's a raised mulch, flowers.
So Kevin has just joined us as well. So if we've got code issues, we can. Speak to him about.
That retention area, that water retention area, that's at about the same grade as the street, the the lot is now, or are you going to have some fill in that lot?
I'll let Julian, um, with, it's actually going to, the bottom of basin will be maybe a foot or two below, maybe three feet below the road.
Right.
Okay, so with the the top of it is going to be about the same grade as it is now?
Yes.
Yeah, if just for me and from my standpoint on the risk factor, I think you're in as good a situation as you could ask. In that you do have that green space and you buffer, and it is, in fact, a depression. So any vehicle or any substance is going to have to drop into that. Which is going to minimize any potential of it going much further. The sign, of course, like the pole, they're at risk. That's true, no matter what corner, what street you drive anywhere. But I think you're actually kind of in a beneficial situation with the location of the stormwater management in that location.
Hey, Chris, you didn't bring in my Tesla charger?
I knew you were to say it, though. I'm just hoping people can drive. Let alone electric or gas right about now.
Right, yeah.
That's where we're at.
Is this the depressed gas market pricing? Is that harming you, or is that just irrelevant?
It's the, I would say it's the lack of people on the roads that's harming us. You know, there's no, all you know, there's no travel, you know? Well, limited travel, I should say that.
The the paving should cost you less now.
Oh, you would think petroleum price went down, but sometimes it does not correspond.
Right, yep. Don, anything from your perspective? Add other questions or anything, or?
What you've shown then for signage, that's the only signage that's going to be.
That is correct. It's the building signs incorporated. You guys have seen our newer stories that's incorporated right there, and the freestanding sign that is it.
Ken made mention of. In his analysis of two different. Types of. Facade, I guess, he was referring to. That he's seen.
I'm guessing he's talking about a probably a timber frame?
Yeah, I guess. I I'm not really sure what he was talking about. I I looked at the all the pictures that I saw, and I didn't really see any big difference in the. In the design, but I was just curious as to what what Ken was talking about when he he wanted. Wonder which which one would be more appropriate for the being across the street from the cemetery? The one that, the one that I was referring to is one that I've seen every frequently on my way up to my daughter's house. Just off of Seneca Parkway, a new one, a beautiful facility. It's a, you've done a great job with right there on one seventy-three or whatever it is.
On a doggy hill.
On a doggy hill. And it's got basically like a faux stone lower portion. Otherwise, it's pretty much identical to that, but it's got. More of everything from the windows down is like stone looking. I don't know if it's real. I assume it's some sort of a, you know, adhered faux. Old looking.
That one was an archaeological, archaeological, architectural overlay district. So, you know, there was requirements for stone. We have stone, you know, the Lafayette one has a timber frame type, but this one is a farm market type. If you, if you guys probably know the history of. The ice cream stand up the road. I was going to go to that site and I was, it never made it. So they kind of built a farm market type. We kind of, when we go in there, we have a timber frame, we have a stone. That one is more, as you know, urbanized housing. Whereas Homer, you guys will all agree, is more of a rural type farm. Well, there's a farm down the road. This is kind of a farm market feel. You know, with a roof and, you know, like I said, the individuals who built the ice cream shop just down the road. I think that was, I know it was the last five, ten years. It's the same kind of design as that. So that's why we, that's why we chose this one. We got to look at the area, you know, what fits into the area, and we thought this model would fit in.
But Chris, you're saying similar to the super cream that's up the road?
That's one year. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Actually, I think they copied us with a blue roof.
Oh, yeah.
Now, the, my only purpose was to make sure that you were aware there were potentially some options on that. That facade, as you could at the location, and obviously, as I said in my memo, in conjunction.
I think it froze again, and. I think the, at least from my perspective, I think what they're proposing kind of fits. A little more architecturally. I mean, you got the houses and that kind of thing there, and it's got that. Pillar kind of look to it. I guess, I don't, I guess I would agree with Chris when he says, you know, a farm market sort of thing. It doesn't, to me, look so commercial. As a couple of the others, you know, do. I've seen, I think, all three of them.
Malin?
Yes.
Are you discussing the facade? Or are you discussing the landscaping?
Right now, this is the elevation of what the building side would look like.
Okay, thank you.
So.
By the way, that's based on the, the, the. Fuel canopy picture that we just received. Today, is that the, is there another facade picture?
No, the facade pictures of the store itself. There's a building elevation, and then in the original package. There was a building elevation was just around in black and white, and then the original package, I'm going to hold this up again. This was given to you guys. You can see it.
Right.
Yeah, that, the original package.
Right. I added that into the package today, too.
Yes, yeah, it's in the package.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't know. Did you hear my conclusion of my comments? Because I got froze out again.
I I don't believe we would have, Ken.
Okay, all I was saying in comment to the facade designs was that I was pointing out the options. That potentially are out there, just so you were aware. I was not making a recommendation, but I didn't know if you realize that there actually are different looks to their facilities.
That's helpful.
Any other questions from either of the two board members?
I don't have any.
No. Kevin, any comment from you regarding? Their proposal?
Bob. I I think probably what what I've seen so far, as far as site plan, my issues obviously are going to be. No different than yours, Malin, safety standpoint. Egress type of issues. Looks like those are pretty well addressed. Beyond that, no, I I think it's a nice looking facility, and it could be a good addition to the village. But beyond that. Mine are the safety issues and the building issues.
All right. So I would our next step then be that if there's no further questions or comments. We need to do the short form seeker, Joan?
Just wanted to let you, before Joan pops in.
Dan, go ahead.
You've got two people, it's only two, but you've got two people watching on YouTube, if you wanted to ask for any public comment.
Okay.
Who do you want to read the questions? Whoever, I think Dan should do the recording, because he's got to get your signature, Malin.
Okay.
So if you want, if you want me to read them for you, I will do that. I have a copy.
Yeah, I don't know if Dan has the copy of it. I asked the other day if we tried to make sure if one of us would have it so that we could.
Yeah, I filled out, sure, I filled out a draft, and it's it's in your packet as well, both the rezoning. Part one, and then the project part one. And with the project part one, there's a part two as well.
Right, which is what we have to do, the little short form, correct?
Yes. So should we towards the beginning of the of the package?
And is that something that you've got an original there, Dan, that you can?
Yeah, when you, you can come to the office and sign it when when you're ready.
Yeah, if we check off the responses for everybody, we'd be good. I could come in and sign that then. Okay, so Joan, if you don't mind reading the questions. But was anybody else that had anything that they wanted to comment on?
Yeah, let me check the YouTube channel.
Okay, this is part two of the short environmental assessment form.
No comments on YouTube.
Assessment. Question number one. Do you have copies of this in front of you? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, you can see that your options to check. With the first column is either a no or small impact, and the second column is moderate to large impact. So number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land site plan or zoning regulation?
I believe that would be no, Joan.
I would agree with that, no.
No.
Okay, number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
Small impact, I think, on that one.
Yeah, I would think small on that because. Yeah, I would think small on that because it is a little bit of a change of, of what's there. It's already commercial, but this may be a little bit more. So I, yeah, I think I would agree with, uh, with Don, a small impact.
I would agree too. Small impact.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No, not really.
No.
Do you have a C E A there?
No.
So then your answer is no. Uh, number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways?
It would be small.
Small. Correct, I would agree.
Everybody's agreed?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No, I would say no, with all the L E D lights and everything, I would say no.
Okay, number seven. Seven A is, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
No.
Be public or private wastewater treatment facilities.
No.
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 Number eight, will the proposed action impair the qua- character or quality of important historic. Archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Uh, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and fauna?
No.
Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No, I think it would improve it.
Number eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Okay, from your answers, you should check the second box. Did you determine that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact? And you need a motion for a negative declaration.
I shall move.
Second.
Uh, well, that's two. Uh, I would call the vote, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So the next, uh, motion, I believe, Joan, and if I'm correct, we need a motion to, uh, approve the final site plan. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If one of you gentlemen would be so kind enough, if you're in agreement that we can make the motion to accept the final site plan.
Don, want me to do it?
Go for it.
Okay, I move that we accept the, uh, site plan as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Second.
And a second, again, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was the zoning change approved?
Uh, yes, I made to, I believe it was May twelfth it was approved.
Yes, all that's, all that's done, Joan. I can get you that information.
Mention that in, in, in your minutes.
Uh, how would we just say that, that, that it has been approved, Joan?
Board in there, yeah.
Cause I did go to the village board and they have.
It was in May's, uh, the first, uh.
Just to put in there that the zoning change that they requested was approved by the village board of trustees. Just a little statement, because there's no mention of it in here.
I would make that statement, liking how you worded it. Put that in there, you can. But that I would make that statement based on knowing that the village board did do that. And that the zoning board as well.
Okay, you're all stated.
Okay. I think we can approve, uh, if there, there isn't any other business, correct?
No.
Looking at the agenda, we're right there, Dan. Um, Joan, I, and I think I'm right, I think the three of us. Can approve the minutes of three nine twenty?
Yes, because you were the ones that were there.
Okay.
You know, also with the last ones, if you, uh, are ready to do those, you also have the four twenty-one minutes.
So we could do both of them at the, right now?
I haven't had a chance to, to go over the four twenty-one minutes, so it's like we just got today, I think.
Okay.
You might have had them today.
Before you go over the minutes, uh, I might make a recommendation. I know the stormwater plan is. Accepted under the final site plan, but I, I think the board should recommend that the village, uh, enter into an agreement with, uh, a maintenance agreement with Burn Dairy.
Good point.
So, that just have that part of your minutes.
Yep, I think that's probably a good idea. Does that need to be a motion, or can we just?
Yes.
So I guess could we get one of you gentlemen to make a motion that we, that, you guys see the maintenance agreement?
No.
No. I think, I think it's a good idea. It takes care of some questions that Don had on the stormwater of. Vention. I think, uh, Kristen has seen that. He knows about it. I guess you've entered into them before, is that correct?
That is correct. I've entered into, I do not have a problem entering into it. Uh, the one that's proposed is, is a very common one. Basically stating that Sunburn Sales will maintain this, you know, if there's any issues, you guys have a right to, you know, make me fix it. But I'm in total agreement with it.
Okay. Don, I think that's one of the things that you, that is a good idea, so I guess if some, one of you two would make the motion and. Read second that, I think that's probably a, a good point, Dan, thank you.
Give me the wording that you want.
Move that, that the village board, do we have to move that they do it? I mean, they, they, that's up there, that's their purview, right?
You recommend that.
Recommend that the village board enter into a main, maintenance agreement with Sunburn and its successors. For the maintenance of the stormwater prevention plan.
You're shaking that.
Perfect, thank you.
Say that again at the end with a sunboard.
And it's, and it's successors.
Yeah. For the.
S- stormwater prevention plan, I guess that's what it's called, isn't it?
Right, for the maintenance, for the maintenance of that, yes.
Maintenance of the stormwater prevention. Right, you're, you're basically maintaining the post-construction. Stormwater features that are incorporated into that design. That's, it stems from the, uh, D E C regulations of either a deed covenant. A long-term maintenance agreement. There's a requirement when you close out the N O I. When you issue your N O T, notice of termination, that you need to check a box of how you're going to ensure that over the long haul. You know, Burn Dairy sells the property. Who's gonna run and maintain and, or, you know, uh, those features that require occasional maintenance? That's what it's about.
So that sounds good to me, Ken. Can you embellish or assist precisely so Joan can add that to the motion, those words?
Well, I think we're just recommending.
It's just a given, isn't it?
Well, I think at this point, we, that would be more where the village would act, actually put that stuff in the, um.
Agreement.
Agreement. W- we're just recommending that they enter into such an agreement. I don't think we can control the wording here. I think they have to do it when they actually. Um, come up with that agreement between Burnson and the village. Would that be correct?
I would agree.
Ken's shaking his head.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, you have what we need, Joan, as far as the motion?
I do. Uh, all you need is a vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye? Aye, so we're unanimous. Thank you very much. Dan, thanks for catching that. So I guess if we can go on to the minutes of the three nine twenty, uh, and have a motion to approve those, we might as well get those out of the way. And, uh, we can wait, uh, Don and folks to review the other ones, um, before we do those, maybe at the next meeting.
I move that we approve those, uh, minutes from three nine twenty.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, I think we're good then. No other business to come before the board. I guess we're to adjourn.
Yes.
Who made that, Dan?
Yes, you did.
And Michael seconded it.
And I'll say aye. So I think with a second and a motion, we're all in favor and we should go. Kristen, I hope this, uh, sorry for the delay, but I hope this gets you through what you need to do and.
Thank you for, thank you for understanding, and thank you, Ken, very, very much as an engineer. I know you put everything aside to work diligently with, uh, Julian. It was very, very helpful. I'm glad you could do that, uh. And he was very, very thorough in his response as well, which we wanna do the right thing he does, so. I, Ken, was, was, thank you very much for your, again, for the last three, four days.
Dan? Dan?
I'm here.
I need a copy of Ken Teeter's, um, report that he gave you. I noticed it's in what you sent me, but it says there's twenty-six pages. I only need what Ken has.
You can just print the first two pages.
I tried printing one or three out of twenty-six, and it wants to print all twenty-six.
Alright, I reset it to you, no worries.
Okay, again, thank you guys very, very much.
Good luck with the project, despite that there's no charger there. That's, uh, should be a good project.
There's a lot of electrical cars. We'll be the first one to put one in, I'll tell you right here.
Okay.